President, or should I call you Council President Pro Tem Dan Clem? Thank you, thank you, thank you for being willing to serve. And would you please move for the approval of additions and deletions?
Yes, we have one addition. It's item 7D. It's the Investment Portfolio Report for the period of July 1st, 2012 through September 30th, 2012. And I move approval of the addition of item 7D.
Second. It's been moved by Council President Pro Tem Clem and seconded by Counselor Thomas? Thank you, Counselor Thomas. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. We have time now for council comment. And before I call on councilors, we have a very special guest this evening in our audience and joining us. We're very pleased to introduce to you Byron Hendricks, who is president of Sedcor, and his special guest and our special guest, the new president of Sedcor, Chad Freeman.
Madam Mayor, councilors, thanks and thanks for your service. Let's see presidential debate, World Series playoff, and a football game, and we're here. So I'll be brief. First, thank you for your service and second, thanks for, you know, your understanding the importance of the role Sedcor plays in the Valley. I wanted to very briefly give you an overview of our selection process. Before we started our selection process, we called together not only people from Sedcor, but people from outside Sedcor to try and understand how we could best serve the job growth mission here in Marion, Polk Counties, and specifically here to you tonight in Salem, and set a strategic plan in place for that so we could identify the right candidate. And I'm very pleased to tell you that not only did we have a number of great applicants, we hired the right person. So Sedcor is excited that Chad has a great background, not only in agricultural issues, but also in high tech. I'm going to let Chad speak to his background and introduce himself to you, but certainly I'd be happy to address any questions the council has for Sedcor. Since Chad doesn't start till November 1st, it would be unfair for you to ask him things. But I would also tell you that November 1st, he has his first candidate site visitor. So the guy's starting running with a board meeting in the morning and working with a client in the afternoon. So it's good stuff. Questions? It's my pleasure to introduce you to Chad Freeman.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Freeman. We appreciate you taking time this evening. Obviously, you had several choices, and we're glad you chose this one.
Great, thank you very much, and thanks for the opportunity. It's still, the Mr. Freeman still throws me off. I'm still waiting for my dad to be behind me, so I've got to expect that. But really looking forward to it. As Byron said, this is an honor to work with the city. I think the opportunities here are very, very strong in what we can do to even, as was mentioned, there's candidates looking and moving here citing some food processing jobs in the very near future. So hopefully, we can capitalize on some of the short-term opportunities and then build for a longer, for a productive long-term. Kind of Byron alluded to some of my background. I've worked in economic development in small rural communities such as throughout Grant County and John Day. Worked with private sector, developing and managing real estate across from San Francisco to Los Angeles and even into Wyoming. And then most recently, worked with the state doing economic developments in the Portland metro area. So I've got a broad diversity, and I think that fits and parlay's well into where the Salem is, as well as Marion and Polk, and how we can work together to really push this region forward.
Excellent. Thank you so much. I appreciate your remarks, and we won't ask you specific questions about your work at Sedcor yet, but do councilors have comments or questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, and look forward to working with you.
Thank you. And I'd like to say to Mr. Hendricks, Byron, my sincere appreciation for the tremendous work that you individually and also the Sedcor Executive Committee did to do the search and to really find the very best person, the very best fit, and also the very careful work that I've been able to be involved in with you in looking ahead for Sedcor and setting priorities and really learning how we can best maximize the City of Salem's role with Sedcor. Appreciate your openness to all of that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, council. The investment is, I think, in a good, good return. We've got work to do, without a doubt, but we're going to be focused on the dollars that come in and how many jobs get created for those dollars, and we won't stop. So thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you both.
We'll get out of Dodge and another appointment.
Hey, good. Okay. Thank you both very much. Thank you.
Ball gets served.
Okay, council comment from councilors? All right. Nothing. All right. And the minutes will show that Counselor Tesler has joined us. Thank you. We did get started a little bit early, I think, this evening. We have a presentation which I'm very excited about. It is called "The Good Governance Award." The City of Salem received this award from the League of Oregon Cities, and I was particularly pleased to be there at that moment because I know from a year, almost two years behind the scenes here, how hard staff work to really make the programs come alive in our neighborhood associations and throughout the community. And to be recognized as the City of Salem was, was a tremendous thrill. So I believe we have a staff person here to receive the award. Oh, there she is. All right, this is Jessica. Is that right? All right. Let's turn this on. Okay. I think I'm on? All right. Jessica, what a thrill at the League of Oregon Cities to see the tremendous work that you've done over the years and particularly in the last year with this special project that we've had in the City of Salem. So I believe that you're going to talk about that a little bit tonight, and then we'll do a couple photos, I think.
Oh, wow. There you are. There you are. Thank you so much. Can you hear me? Thank you, Mayor Peterson, members of the council, members of the community, and city staff. My name is Jessica Price. I'm the City of Salem's Neighborhood Partnership Coordinator, as the mayor said. In addition to providing support to Salem's 19 neighborhood associations, the city has the opportunity to collaborate with two specific neighborhood areas on community-building collaborative types of efforts. And to say this program could have won this award without help would be an extreme understatement since this program depends on committed partners working together to make a difference in their neighborhoods. And so some of those partners include neighbors, property owners, renters, schools, businesses, nonprofits, churches, community groups, basically anyone who's interested in the livability of their neighborhood. So I get to work with some really amazing people, and I'm thankful for that. The partnership was actually launched in 1997 to address a specific neighborhood which was requiring just a hugely disproportionate amount of city services. So today, groups of committed partners meet regularly in the four neighborhood areas that have been involved with this program. They identify strengths and challenges specific to their neighborhood, they set goals, they work on organizing different community activities, and they leverage additional resources, a lot of additional resources. When someone asks me what it is that I do, sometimes it's hard to explain because collaborative efforts range from anything to, one day I'm helping to build a community garden, and then the next week I'm helping maybe out in Highland organize some neighborhood concerts in their park, and then the following week I'm doing some free activities for kids. For example, this Saturday, I'm going to be out at East Gate Basin Park with Lansing neighbors who will be planting 25 trees and cleaning up their park to celebrate Make a Difference Day. And then I'm also already hard at work with East Lancaster neighbors and community partners on our second holiday party, annual holiday party. Last year, we decided in response to community need for activities for children and then also community resources, to put on a big holiday party, free to the whole neighborhood. We served a dinner, a hot meal, we had gifts, and we had pictures with Santa, we had free trees, we had just all sorts of things for families. And so in our first attempt, when we had almost 500 people show up, we decided shortly after that, we wanted to make this an annual event, so that'll be coming up on December 14th. There's actually an opportunity for anyone who wants to work on something through the Neighborhood Partnership Program to apply. Applications are available each year. In fact, if you wanted to be in on the 2013, 2014 round, you'd have to ask, act fast. The applications are out right now, but they're due on November 1st. But then there would be an opportunity to apply each additional year. So it just, again, I want to say thank you to all of the wonderful partners that I've got a chance to work with, all the city staff who have supported us in these projects, and then also that I just look forward to finding out which neighborhood area I'll get to work in come January. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jessica. Just excellent. So it will be our pride to have this lovely plaque reside in the City of Salem. I think maybe you want it on your desk for a few days and just enjoy it. And Brady Rogers, I want to also say thank you to you and how hard you work and your, all of your staff to really make our neighborhoods better. So thank you so much. I'm so pleased for you. Thank you. We do have a public comment this evening. We have three individuals, no, two individuals who've signed up for public comment, Justin Much and then Marilyn Krug. And I don't see, Mr. Much, what you've signed up to speak about, so...
Actually, I just signed in.
Oh, thank you. You're our reporter this evening. Thank you. I thought the names seemed very familiar to me, and I was trying to figure out, hmm, I wonder what he's coming to talk about. All right, well, welcome. And then Marilyn Krug is here from Artists in Action. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Is this on? Okay. I can't tell from here. I do have some handouts for the council if they'd like to know. Who do I give them to? Anyone?
I think if you just give them to someone there, they'll pass them around to us.
I'll keep one to refer to. Artists in Action is a nonprofit group of diverse dedicated artists and artisans working to create stronger ties with each other and the communities of Salem area. I'm here to speak in favor of your agenda item to offer or provide, it's the 365 Ferry Street address, for a two-month period, November and December, to host our something, our annual Something Red event. This is actually our 10th Something Red event. This was created by artists in the community 10 years ago to celebrate visual arts in the downtown Salem area with partnership with merchants, building owners, and the City of Salem. We hold a big reception on September, December 1st, Wednesday. And last year, we had a record number of 22 downtown merchants participating, showing more than 110 pieces of art from more than 70 artists. We're excited to continue this tradition in downtown Salem. It brings, you know, culture downtown for, you know, artists and the merchants. They love it. They, every year, they go, yes, we want to do it next year. And, you know, even if we tried to say no, as artists, we can't turn this down. It's part of fulfilling our mission. We keep outgrowing everywhere we have a reception every year. And so knowing that this opportunity is available, we'd like to take advantage of it. You might also be familiar with us. We host Paint the Town, and have done that for about 12 years, I think. Painting Plan Air in locations in and around Salem throughout the summer months. We have an outside-the-box silent auction at the Salem Art Fair every year, just about seven to nine different activities we do, all as volunteer. So we thank you for this opportunity to continue this event.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you coming this evening to talk with us about the specific location and also to remind us of the many things that you're doing. Do councilors have any questions or comments? Well, I'd like to say thank you so much for all of the help that Artists in Action gave to the city for our walkabout during the League of Oregon Cities meeting that was hugely successful. People from across the state were in Salem and joined our urban renewal staff and Artists in Action all over downtown, looking at art and enjoying the refreshments and camaraderie. It was a very pleasant experience for everyone who came to the conference. So thank you for that and for making art a part of our streetscapes every day.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Okay. All right, I think we are ready for the consent calendar. Counselor Clem, do you have a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second. It's been moved by Counselor Clem and seconded by Counselor Dickey to approve the consent calendar, and I need to note that I'm recusing myself from item 3.3A. Now, is there any discussion regarding the consent calendar? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. We have one public hearing this evening, and that has to do with the closure of Pringle Creek Urban Renewal Plan. I believe we have a staff report. Do we have anyone signed up for that? No one? Okay.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilors. My name is Jill Quarkren, and I'm a project coordinator with Urban Development.
I'm sorry, I have to interrupt. I'm sorry, I should have asked the city recorder to open the hearing. Would you please?
Yes, I will. The Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing for the purpose of considering Ordinance Bill Number 2812 declaring the expiration and terminating the Pringle Creek Urban Renewal Plan.
Thank you. The public hearing is now open. Now, Jill, thank you.
All right. I'll reintroduce myself. I'm Jill Quarkren from Urban Development as a project coordinator. And we are here tonight following direction from the Urban Renewal Agency's September 10th resolution and council, council's October 8th direction to terminate the Pringle Creek Urban Renewal Area. If this works good. We're, I would, at this time, I would like to enter the staff report and to the public record. We are holding a public hearing tonight to receive comments regarding its termination. We've notified the eight taxing jurisdictions, Can Do and Scan Neighborhood Associations, and the public has been aware of it as well. We have no comments to date on it. The goals of the Urban Renewal Area have all been met. We have additional off-street parking, housing, retail activity has all increased, natural amenities abound throughout the area, give it a very pleasant image and feel. Transportation connectivity has improved, reinvestment by large companies has occurred. The agency was able to assemble a lot of small lots to create some large lots. And the railroad that was actually on, the railroad line was actually on Trade Street that's been removed. It's part of, was part of the Pringle Parkway connection as well. We're in the Pringle Park, or Pringle Park, Pringle Urban Renewal Area. Civic Center is the Blue Star, and it's about 88 acres, and we're going to take a very brief tour of it. Whoops, I'm sorry. Well, we're going to start our tour, I'm sorry. How do I, how would I get rid of that? Okay. All right, back to our area. Just to go over the area, Commercial Street is on the west side. It wraps around the backside of the library on Leslie and kind of zigzags up over to Pringle Creek, over by Pringle Park. And then again, a little irregular along Church Street to the north, to State Street, back down to Ferry, and then to Trade. So I'm going to go, give you just a brief pictures of before and after so you can see what it looked like from the east going over towards Salem Hospital and so forth. This would be from the back of the Civic Center overlooking the parking area. This is the area where Mirror Pond is. Gives you a construction view. This is Mirror Pond today. And the public library, Urban Renewal paid for the second-floor addition to the library and the parking structure. This is across the Liberty Bridge here, future home of the post office. Going up to Mill Race Park, a block north. You can notice here all the above-ground lines and poles and so forth. All of that was undergrounded throughout Pringle. Mill Race Plaza today. And SAFE was one of the first developers that came in, and they did purchase a large lot where they've built their main office building, and that was a lot that was assembled by Urban Renewal Funds. This gives you an overview in 1973 of the area. Again, you can see the SAFE building there. Rest of the area's basically been cleared, ready for redevelopment. 1975, a couple more items happened with Pringle Parkade, SAFE again on the right, and the Salem Housing Authority and the tall building in the back. That was funded by HUD. However, Urban Renewal added some additional amenities such as balconies that HUD would not pay for. The pathways, I think, are famous in Pringle Park area, very pleasant. And of course, one of the goals was preserving green belts. There's a lot of greenery throughout the area. It was also increasing housing. The agency brought, supplied a loan for a partial, the partial building, the Salmon Run building that has housing and offices in it. And of course, the Urban Renewal Agency was involved in 295 Church, private development for the housing above, and the ITN CCTV home today. Some older pictures again of the area. The signages that you see throughout the area were also paid by Urban Renewal. After the flood of 97, the past community hall in Pringle Park was destroyed, so a new one was built, and it was successful in terms of flood, as we, as last January, it was completely flooded and it was fine. So this brings us really to the end of the northern end of Pringle Urban Renewal Area, up by Church Street. We have had a lot of good spinoffs because of it. I'm sure you're all aware of Water Place. This is the most recent large lead building that was built there, all privately funded. There have been some other additional private investments that are nearby, such as Salem Hospital and so forth. So this brings us to our next step, basically, I'm sorry, backtrack a little bit, just more history. The assessed value in 1971, when this was formed, was just under $19 million. By 2012, the value was almost $74 million. And I think it's important to note that tax assessment collections discontinued in fiscal year 1992 to 93, so it's still been building along that time. So we've captured our goals, including streetscape, as you can see. Our next steps that we have will be a second reading of the ordinance that will take place in two weeks. If the ordinance is approved, then it will be effective 30 days later, and we'll record it with Marion County. After that, the, there will be a financial report to the state, and remaining funds will be given back to the eight jurisdictions through the Marion County Treasurer. So that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions? Counselor Clem?
Yeah, Jill, that was a very good presentation. I just wanted to emphasize and ask, maybe, maybe we can back up the slides or not. I'm fascinated by the use of the phrase "assembled properties," because I really think, I'm not sure that private investment would have done that. We assembled, and then they invested, and that's, I'm trying to draw just sort of a recap real quick of properties that the Urban Renewal District assembled. And then my last question is how much money estimated is going back to the eight taxing jurisdictions? So those are my two questions.
Okay. I don't know all the properties that have been assembled. I do know SAFE was a primary one, and my guesstimation would be the areas where Pringle Parkade and the whole, that whole area there. And the next block of property would be where the Salem Housing Authority would be. I do know that some of the area also was taken for Pringle Parkway, part of the, that was paid for mostly by the city, as I understand, but part of Urban Renewal, excuse me. And in 295 Church, there were some that we had acquired that property as well, and a couple other areas that were vacated and helped support Willamette and its growth.
Okay.
And your second question in terms of the funds...
Just an estimation of what the total dollar value is that might be.
To, did you want to handle it?
John Wales, Urban Development Director. There's about $900 left in the, in the URA, which will go back to Marion County to be redistributed.
Okay. We didn't, we didn't overcollect a lot of money just to send it back.
There, just to be clear, I had sent out a communication to the council early in the day, because this question had come up, that a couple years ago, back in January of 2011, the Urban Renewal Agency assigned the proceeds of the loan for Salmon Run to the city. And so those, those proceeds are being paid into the, to the, to the city at this time, and will be able to be used for projects that are consistent with the Urban Renewal Plan.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. I'd like to comment that I'm very pleased to know that there is that intent and the plan to use those funds to improve the, particularly the concrete areas around the Pringle Parkade and the walkways, and I think they'll be much enhanced, safer, and certainly more attractive when we can get that concrete repaired, and then also do something that seems a little more humane for the ducks than the miles of concrete that's out there. It is popular with the ducks, it is popular with, with people, and I think that with some, you know, more softer landscape there, it will be even more attractive and probably easier to maintain over the long run as well. It's an important asset, and I was very aware of that during the League of Oregon Cities Conference, when so many people were parking in the Pringle Parkade and walking across to the conference center. It's just, it's one more gateway in a way to our city. It's one more eye, eye-catching, can be a very eye-catching, very pleasant area, so very happy that we're going to be seeing some more improvements around there. Thank you. All right. Other questions or comments? All right. And we have no one signed up for, to speak during this hearing, so we'll close the hearing, all right? Close the hearing, and then we will entertain a motion. And our motion is going to come from Counselor Tesler.
Thank you. I'll move staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Tesler and seconded by Counselor Clem to move the staff recommendation for the closure of the Pringle Creek URA. Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. I see no special orders of business or unfinished business. In your agenda packet, there were several items, information reports. Were there any questions by councilors regarding the information reports or any reports that you'd like to call up? All right, then we'll move on to ordinances. Would the recorder please read the, our first reading?
Ordinance Bill Number 1512, vacating a portion of alley right-of-way located along the north property line of Pioneer and City View Cemeteries.
Thank you. And as this is a second reading, there is no, excuse me, this is the first reading, but there is no public comment during this section of the meeting for this particular item. And do we have a motion, Counselor Blasey?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. I move staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Blasey and seconded by Counselor Clem to move the staff recommendation. Is there discussion? Counselor Clausen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wasn't here for the public hearing, so I'll be recusing myself from this.
I wasn't here for the public hearing, so I'll be recusing myself from this vote.
All right, thank you. Further discussion? We'll call for the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. We have a second reading. Would the recorder please introduce that?
Ordinance Bill Number 2912, vacating a portion of Bellevue Street Southeast located west of Commercial Street Southeast. Counselor Nanki is absent. Counselor Claussen?
Aye.
Counselor Dickey?
Aye.
Counselor Thomas?
Aye.
Counselor Blasey?
Aye.
Counselor Clem?
Aye.
Counselor Bennett is absent. Counselor Tesler?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
I have two more as well. Ordinance Bill Number 3012, changing the comprehensive plan designation, a neighborhood plan designation for certain properties.
Counselor Claussen?
Aye.
Counselor Dickey?
Aye.
Counselor Thomas?
Aye.
Counselor Blasey?
Aye.
Counselor Clem?
Aye.
Counselor Bennett is absent. Counselor Tesler?
Aye.
Counselor Nanki is absent. Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
Ordinance Bill Number 3112, changing the zoning district designation for certain properties. Counselor Dickey?
Aye.
Counselor Thomas?
Aye.
Counselor Blasey?
Aye.
Counselor Clem?
Aye.
Counselor Bennett is absent. Counselor Tesler?
Aye.
Counselor Nanki is absent. Counselor Claussen?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
Thank you. We have one person signed up this evening for public comment, Evan White.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilors. I'm Evan White, address 4553 Brock Loop South, and I'm happy to report that the Coal Hard Truth Forum was a big success. Over 100 Salem residents attended. It was filmed by CCTV, and you'll find a DVD and a schedule of viewing times in your blue packet. A journalist gave an overview of plans to ship 10 million tons of coal a year from Coos Bay, which would result in 28 coal trains going through Salem every week. Dr. Martin Donahue then described health hazards from coal dust, from diesel exhaust and air pollution that comes to Oregon when the coal is burned in Asia. Coal dust is a major trigger for people who suffer from asthma. Toxins in coal also affect infants in the womb and in early childhood. Dr. Joe Bowersox from Willamette explained that coal exports to Asia accelerate climate change, potentially leading to catastrophic forest fires and rising sea levels which endanger coastal communities. Finally, Reverend Rick Davis reminded us that all that is necessary for the triumph of evil is for good people to do nothing. The Eugene City Council held a work session on October 8th with testimony by Ross McFarlane of Climate Solutions and Dr. Andy Harris, whom some of you will remember as a former Salem physician. They also heard testimony from the mayor of Reed'sport and the CEO of the Port of Coos Bay. Coos Bay has its economic problems, but so do we, and I think they should look for ways to improve their economic climate without endangering those of other communities. More than 1,000 residents of Salem and surrounding areas have signed petitions addressed to our governor and to you, Madam Mayor, stating that they oppose coal exports from Oregon and urging that you apply your leadership to prevent Oregon from facilitating any coal export infrastructure or transportation in our state. Tonight, Madam Mayor, I'm making a down payment of the first 634 petitions, which are in this sack over here. The information packet in your binder is loosely organized around a resolution that is being considered by the Eugene City Council. In fact, I believe they're voting on it tonight. If Salem does not raise its voice, as elected leaders in other communities have already done, and if coal trains come through Salem, our grandchildren will wonder how we ever allowed this to happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and we'll accept the petitions, I believe, if you just give those to the city recorder. Is that the procedure? All right, there we are. Thank you very much. All right, questions by Counselor, Counselor Dickey?
Yeah, thanks for coming down. I'm just kind of starting to learn about this issue, so it's kind of interesting. Coal is not something that we use here typically in the Northwest, and so it's something that I have not really been familiar with. I'm a little bit intrigued by the, the coal trains come through without something that covers the coal, they just come through open, it sounds like. And so is there any way to kind of mitigate that dust, or how, how does that work?
The state of the art apparently is to apply something called a cercaf can, if I'm pronouncing correctly, a latex spray on top of the cars, and that supposedly reduces the dust by 85%. However, as an article in the Eugene Register-Guard pointed out yesterday, apparently there's a big war between the railroads and the coal companies about who pays for the cost of this, and apparently it's pretty expensive, like 50 million, 100 million dollars, or something like that. But it's not entirely effective.
Yes, go ahead.
Is it, is there any sort of requirement by the EPA or the FDA or someone to, to apply that?
Apparently not, and it has to be applied at the mine, and so there's no, not going to be any sort of government inspector right there at the site saying, oh, you forgot to spray this corner of the, of the coal car.
All right, let's see, we have another question. Yes, Darlene Strozen?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. White. I don't know if you can answer this question, but there are two railroads in Salem, and one of them is in my neighborhood, the Portland and Western bisects our Highland neighborhood. Do you know if that is one of the railroads that the coal train, coal is proposed to?
The one that goes this way sort of would not haul coal. It's the one that goes through the Amtrak station.
The Union?
Yeah, Union Pacific.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Before we adjourn this evening, I would like to note that the city of Salem has unfortunately suffered a great loss this last weekend with the very sudden death of Battalion Chief Patrick Caprino. I think probably everyone has received an email from the police chief, Mike Niblock. I'd like to convey on behalf of the city to his family our condolences, and really our condolences to the entire members of our firefighter family, because many of them work and have worked directly with him, and he's been a very important, very hardworking, and very commendable member of our firefighting family, and we do pass our condolences to his family and to those who worked with him. All right, I have no further items. I have no mayor's items. Are there any councilors' motions? All right, no further business. We are adjourned.